No zero. The Senate concurs with the House substitute.
On page eight, uncontested calendar, House bills on third reading.
Senator from James City County, Senator Norman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I now move all the House bills on the third reading on the uncontested calendar, which would include all House bills on pages eight through forty-one, including House Bill sixteen seventy-five through House Bill twenty-eight eleven, be placed upon their final passage in the block after the adoption of any amendments. If any senator desires to remove a House bill from the block, please do so after the clerk has read the number of that bill.
Thank the senator. Question is, shall House bills on the uncontested calendar, third reading, pages eight through forty-one, House Bill sixteen seventy-five through House Bill twenty-eight eleven, be placed upon their final passage in a block after the adoption of any amendments thereto? With the understanding that any senator desiring a bill be removed from the block will do so after the clerk has read the number of the bill. All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion is agreed to. The bills are before us in the block. The clerk will read the number of the bills.
House Bill sixteen seventy-five, reported from the Committee for Courts of Justice. House Bill seventeen forty-two, reported from the Committee for Courts of Justice, with amendment.
Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshane.
Mr. President, I move that the committee amendment be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee amendment be agreed to? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee amendment is agreed to.
House Bill eighteen seventeen, reported from the Committee for Courts of Justice, with a substitute.
Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshane.
Mr. President, I move the committee substitute be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is agreed to.
House Bill nineteen fifty-four, reported from the Committee for Courts of Justice, with a substitute.
Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshane.
Mr. President, I move the committee substitute be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is agreed to.
House Bill twenty sixteen, reported from the Committee for Courts of Justice. House Bill twenty fifty-six, reported from the Committee for Courts of Justice, with a substitute.
Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshane.
Mr. President, I move the committee substitute be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is agreed to.
House Bill twenty-two thirty-nine, reported from the Committee for Courts of Justice. House Bill twenty-two eighty-nine, reported from the Committee for Courts of Justice, and there is a floor substitute.
Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Surville.
Mr. President.
Okay. Senator, I'm sorry, we have a floor sub listed under Senator Surville, but Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshane.
Mr. President, I move to waive the reading and floor substitute.
Question is, shall the reading of the floor substitute be waived? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The reading of the floor substitute is waived. Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshane.
I yield to the senator from Eastern. I move the floor substitute be agreed to, and speaking to that.
Senators, the floor.
Mr. President, members of the Senate, this is a substitute that makes no substantive changes in this bill and incorporates some technical suggestions and that were made by the Supreme Court of Virginia. The bill deals with how you remove cases to the circuit court as a result of increasing the ad damnum in certain civil cases, and with that, I would say that I'm not aware of any opposition to the floor substitute, and I would renew my motion that it be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the floor substitute be agreed to? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The floor substitute is agreed to.
House Bill twenty-three hundred, reported from the Committee for Courts of Justice, with a substitute.
Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshane.
Mr. President, I move the committee substitute be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is agreed to.
House Bill twenty-three oh three, reported from the Committee for Courts of Justice, with a substitute.
Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshane.
Mr. President, I move the committee substitute be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is agreed to.
House Bill twenty-four oh nine, reported from the Committee for Courts of Justice. House Bill twenty-four thirteen, reported from the Committee for Courts of Justice, with amendments.
Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshane.
Mr. President, I move the committee amendments be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee amendments be agreed to? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee amendments are agreed to.
House Bill twenty-four fourteen, reported from the Committee for Courts of Justice. House Bill twenty-four fifty-two, reported from the Committee for Courts of Justice. House Bill twenty-five seventy-six, reported from the Committee for Courts of Justice, with amendment.
Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshane.
Mr. President, I move the committee amendments be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee amendment be agreed to? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee amendment is agreed to.
House. House Bill twenty-six seventy-eight, reported from the Committee for Courts of Justice, with a substitute.
Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshane.
Mr. President, I move the committee substitute be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is agreed to.
House Bill sixteen eleven, reported from the Committee on Finance, with a substitute.
Senator from James City County, or Senator from Augusta, Senator Hanger.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the committee substitute be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is agreed to.
House Bill sixteen twenty-nine, reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology. House Bill sixteen thirty-nine, reported from the Committee on Finance. House Bill sixteen forty, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor. House Bill sixteen fifty-nine, reported from the Committee on Rehabilitation and Social Services, with an amendment, and from the Committee on Finance.
Senator from Spotsylvania, Senator Reeves.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move the committee amendment.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee amendment be adopted? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee amendment is adopted.
House Bill sixteen sixty, reported for the Committee on General Laws and Technology. House Bill sixteen sixty-three, reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology. House Bill sixteen eighty-two, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor, with a substitute.
The senior senator from Virginia Beach, Senator Wagner.
First of all, I want to thank, I mentioned there was no ice cream, and all of a sudden the page brought me ice cream. Whoever did that, I'll also tell you, I don't have a Corvette either. But having said that, Mr. President, I move the substitute be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is agreed to.
House Bill seventeen forty, reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology. House Bill seventeen fifty-nine, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor. House Bill seventeen seventy-three, reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology. House Bill seventeen seventy-four, reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology, with amendment.
Senator from Mecklenburg, Senator Ruff.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the committee amendment.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee amendment be agreed to? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee amendment is agreed to.
House Bill eighteen twenty-eight, reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology. House Bill eighteen thirty-six, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor, with amendment.
Senior senator from Virginia Beach, Senator Wagner.
Move the committee amendment be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee amendment be agreed to? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee amendment is agreed to.
House Bill eighteen eighty-three, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor. House Bill eighteen eighty-seven, reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology. House Bill nineteen fifteen, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor. House Bill nineteen twenty-three, reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology. House Bill nineteen twenty-five, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor.
Mr. President.
Senator from Fairfax City, Senator Peterson.
Could House Bill nineteen twenty-five come out of the block and go by for the day?
Without objection, House Bill nineteen twenty-five will be removed from the block and will go by for the day.
House Bill nineteen sixty-two, reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology. House Bill nineteen sixty-six, reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology, with amendment.
Senator from Mecklenburg, Senator Ruff.
Amendments.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee amendments be adopted? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee amendments are adopted.
House Bill two thousand three, reported from the Committee on Finance, with a substitute.
Senator from Augusta, Senator Hanger.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the committee substitute be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is agreed to.
House Bill two thousand seven, reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology, with a substitute.
Senator from Mecklenburg, Senator Ruff.
Move the committee amendment.
Thank the senator. Question is, shall the committee substitute be adopted? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is adopted.
House Bill twenty thirty-eight, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor. House Bill twenty fifty-eight, reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology, with a substitute.
Senator from Mecklenburg, Senator Ruff.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the committee substitute.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is agreed to.
House Bill twenty eighty-one, reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology. House Bill twenty ninety-three, reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology. House Bill twenty-one oh nine, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor, with amendment.
Senior senator from Virginia Beach, Senator Wagner.
Mr. President, I move the committee amendment be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee amendment be agreed to? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee amendment is agreed to.
House Bill twenty-one thirty-three, reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology. House Bill twenty-one fifty, reported from the Committee on Finance. House Bill twenty-one sixty-one, reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology. House Bill twenty-one ninety-eight, reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology. House Bill twenty-two twenty-five, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor. House Bill twenty-two twenty-nine, reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology. House Bill twenty-two thirty, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor.
Mr. President.
Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Surville.
Can twenty-two thirty come out of the block and by for the day?
Without objection, House Bill twenty-two thirty will be removed from the block and will go by for the day.
House Bill twenty-two thirty-four, reported from the Committee on Finance, with a substitute.
Senator from Augusta, Senator Hanger.
Mr. President, I move the committee substitute be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is agreed to.
House Bill twenty-two thirty-eight, reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology. House Bill twenty-two fifty-one, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor. House Bill twenty-two seventy-nine, reported from the Committee on Finance. House Bill twenty-two eighty-four, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor. House Bill twenty-two ninety-three, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor. House Bill twenty-two ninety-eight, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor. House Bill twenty-three oh six, reported from the Committee on Finance, with amendments.
Senator from Augusta, Senator Hanger.
Mr. President, I move the committee amendments be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee amendments be agreed to? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee amendments are agreed to.
House Bill twenty-three twenty-eight, reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology. House Bill twenty-three forty-five, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor. House Bill twenty-three fifty-two, reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology. House Bill twenty-three fifty-four, reported from the Committee on Finance. House Bill twenty-three fifty-six, reported from the Committee on Finance.
Mr. President.
Senator from Roanoke County, Senator Suterlein.
Can House Bill twenty-three fifty-six please come out of the block?
Without objection, House Bill twenty-three fifty-six will be removed from the block.
House Bill twenty-three fifty-seven, reported from the Committee on Finance. House Bill twenty-three sixty, reported from the Committee on Finance. House Bill twenty-three eighty-five, reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology. House Bill twenty-four ten, reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology. House Bill twenty-four nineteen, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor. House Bill twenty-four forty, reported from the Committee on Finance. House Bill twenty-four forty-three, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor, with a substitute, and there is a floor amendment.
Senior senator from Virginia Beach, Senator Wagner.
First, Mr. President, I move the substitute be agreed to.
Question is, shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is agreed to. Senior senator from Virginia Beach, Senator Wagner.
And then, Mr. President, I move the floor amendment, the reading of the floor amendment be waived.
Question is, shall the reading of the floor amendment be waived? All in favor of waiving the reading will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The reading of the floor amendment is waived. Senior senator from Virginia Beach, Senator Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. President. House Bill twenty-four forty-three comes at the request of the Bureau of Insurance. It sets up and defines the rules and regulations and codes for benefits consortiums that inadvertently captured the banks participating, and we ask to strike that language. That's what the floor amendment does, and with that explanation, I move the floor amendment pass.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the floor amendment be adopted? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The floor amendment is adopted.
House Bill twenty-four seventy-three.
Mr. President.
Senator from Alexandria, Senator Eben.
Could House Bill twenty-four forty-three come out of the block?
Without objection, House Bill twenty-four forty-three will be removed from the block.
House Bill twenty-four seventy-three, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor. House Bill twenty-four seventy-seven, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor.
Mr. President.
Senator from Fairfax City, Senator Peterson.
Could twenty-four seventy-seven come out of the block?
Without objection, House Bill twenty-four seventy-seven will be removed from the block.
House Bill twenty-five fifteen, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor, and there is a floor amendment.
Senator from Henrico, Senator Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the floor amendment and speak to it.
Senator, want to waive the reading?
Waive the reading, yes. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Senator. Question is, shall the reading of the floor amendment be waived? All in favor of waiving the reading will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The reading of the floor amendment is waived. Senator from Henrico, Senator Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. President. This amendment just puts on some language. There is currently some consideration of regulations at the federal level that may influence this bill, and so this is just a contingency in case there's any conflict between that and...
Mr. President.
Senator from Bass, Senator Dees.
Would the Senator from Henrico yield for a question?
I will, Mr. President.
Senator Yild, you have the floor.
Mr. President, I refer to the third word in the amendment. Is the D at the end of that word supposed to be a T?
Senator has the floor.
Not to my knowledge, Mr. President.
Further question?
That, to the extent permitted by federal law?
Excuse me, Mr. President, I was looking at the fourth word. Yes, indeed, that should be a T.
Thank the senator.
Thank you.
Question is, shall the floor amendment be adopted? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The floor amendment is adopted.
House Bill twenty-five thirty-eight, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor. House Bill twenty-five forty-one, reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology, with a substitute.
Senator from Mecklenburg, Senator Ruff.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the committee substitute.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be adopted? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is adopted.
House Bill twenty-five fifty, reported from the Committee on Finance, with a substitute.
Senator from Augusta, Senator Hanger.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the committee substitute be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is agreed to.
House Bill twenty-six hundred, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor. House Bill twenty-six thirty-two, reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology. House Bill twenty-six thirty-nine, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor, with amendments.
Senior senator from Virginia Beach, Senator Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the committee amendment be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee amendments be agreed to? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee amendments are agreed to.
House Bill twenty-six fifty-five, reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology. House Bill twenty-six sixty-four, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor, with amendment.
Senior senator from Virginia Beach, Senator Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the committee amendment be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee amendment be agreed to? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee amendment is agreed to.
House Bill twenty-six seventy-two, reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology. House Bill twenty-six ninety, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor. House Bill twenty-seven eleven, reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology, with amendment.
Senator from Mecklenburg, Senator Ruff.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the committee amendment.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee amendment be adopted? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee amendment is adopted.
House Bill twenty-seven nineteen, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor. House Bill twenty-seven twenty-six, reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology. House Bill twenty-seven thirty-three, reported from the Committee on Finance. House Bill twenty-seven thirty-eight, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor.
Mr. President.
Senator from Roanoke County, Senator Suterlein.
Can House Bill twenty-seven thirty-eight please come out of the block?
Without objection, House Bill twenty-seven thirty-eight will be removed from the block.
House Bill twenty-seven forty-four, reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology. House Bill twenty-seven forty-seven, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor, with amendments.
Senior senator from Virginia Beach, Senator Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the committee amendment be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee amendments be agreed to? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee amendments are agreed to.
House Bill twenty-seven sixty-two, reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology. House Bill twenty-seven seventy, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor, with a substitute.
Senior senator from Virginia Beach, Senator Wagner.
Mr. President, I move the substitute be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is agreed to.
House Bill twenty-seven eighty-six, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor, with a substitute.
Senior senator from Virginia Beach, Senator Wagner.
Yes, Mr. President. I move the substitute be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is agreed to.
House Bill twenty-seven ninety-two, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor. House Bill twenty-eight eleven.
Senator.
Senator from Roanoke County, Senator Suterlein.
Can both House Bill twenty-seven eighty-six and House Bill twenty-seven ninety-two please come out of the block?
Without objection, House Bills twenty-seven eighty-six and twenty-seven ninety-two will be removed from the block.
House Bill twenty-eight eleven, reported from the Committee on Finance.
Question is, shall the House bills pass? Senator from Hanover, Senator McDougal.
Could House Bill twenty-five thirty-eight, on page thirty-four, come out of the block and go by for the day?
Without objection, House Bill twenty-five thirty-eight will be removed from the block and will go by for the day. Question is, shall the House bills pass in a block? That is, all bills except for nineteen twenty-five, twenty-two thirty, twenty-five thirty-eight, twenty-three fifty-six, twenty-four forty-three, twenty-four seventy-seven, twenty-seven thirty-eight, twenty-seven eighty-six, twenty-seven ninety-two. All in favor of the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote?
[beep].
Have all the senators voted?
[beep].
Do any senators desire to change their vote?
[beep].
The clerk will close the roll.
Ayes forty, no zero.
Ayes forty, no zero. The bills and the block pass. Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshane.
Mr. President, I move that the rules be suspended and that House Joint Resolution Number nine hundred seventy-nine be taken up for immediate consideration.
Question is, shall the rules be suspended and the House Joint Resolution be taken up for immediate consideration? All in favor of the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote?
[beep].
Have all the senators voted?
[beep].
Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes thirty-nine, no zero.
Ayes thirty-nine, no zero. The rules are suspended and the joint resolution be taken up for immediate consideration. Clerk will read the title of the resolution.
House Joint Resolution Number 979, election of a Supreme Court of Virginia justice, a Court of Appeals of Virginia judge, Circuit Court judges, general district court judges, juvenile and domestic relations district court judges, and a member of the Judicial Inquiry and Review Commission.
Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshane.
Mr. President, I move that the reading of the resolution be waived.
Question is, shall the reading of the resolution be waived? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the reading of the resolution is waived. Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshane.
Mr. President, I move that the resolution be agreed to.
Question is, shall the resolution be agreed to? All in favor of agreeing to the resolution will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? The clerk will close the roll.
Ayes thirty-nine, no zero.
Ayes thirty-nine, no zero. Senate will come to order. The senators will please take their seats. The time for the joint order for certain judicial elections has arrived, and the Senate, on its part, is ready to proceed with the execution of House Joint Resolution Number 979. Nominations are now in order for a Justice of the Supreme Court of Virginia. Chair recognizes Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshane.
Mr. President, I move that the rules be suspended, the Committee for Courts of Justice be discharged from further consideration of the resolution, the readings of the title be waived, and that Senate Resolution Number 120 be taken up for immediate consideration.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the rules be suspended, the Committee for Courts of Justice be discharged from further consideration of the resolution, the reading of the title be waived, and Senate Resolution Number 120 be taken up for immediate consideration? As many as are in favor of the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes thirty-nine, no zero.
Ayes thirty-nine, no zero. The rules are suspended to take up the resolution for immediate consideration. Chair recognizes Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshane.
That the resolution be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the resolution be agreed to? As many as are in favor of agreeing to the resolution will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is agreed to. Nominations are now in order for a Judge of the Court of Appeals of Virginia. Chair recognizes Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshane.
Move that the rules be suspended, that the Committee for Courts of Justice be discharged from further consideration of the resolution, readings of the title be waived, and the Senate Resolution Number 121 be taken up for immediate consideration.
Thank the senator. Question is, shall the rules be suspended, the Committee for Courts of Justice be discharged from further consideration of the resolution, the readings of the title be waived, and Senate Resolution Number 121 be taken up for immediate consideration? As many as are in favor of the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes thirty-nine, no zero.
Ayes thirty-nine, no zero. The rules are suspended to take up the resolution for immediate consideration. Chair recognizes Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshane.
Mr. President, I move that the resolution be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the resolution be agreed to? As many as are in favor of agreeing to the resolution will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is agreed to. Nominations are now in order for Judges of the respective Circuit Courts. Chair recognizes Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshane.
Mr. President, I move that the rules be suspended, the Committee for Courts of Justice be discharged from further consideration of the resolution, the readings of the title be waived, and that Senate Resolution Number 122 be taken up for immediate consideration.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the rules be suspended, the Committee for Courts of Justice be discharged from further consideration of the resolution, the readings of the title be waived, and Senate Resolution Number 122 be taken up for immediate consideration? All in favor of the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes forty, no zero.
Ayes forty, no zero. The rules are suspended to take up the resolution for immediate consideration. Chair recognizes Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshane.
Mr. President, I move that the resolution be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the resolution be agreed to? All in favor of agreeing to the resolution will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is agreed to. Nominations are now in order for Judges of the respective General District Courts. Chair recognizes Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshane.
Mr. President, I move that the rules be suspended, the Committee for Courts of Justice be discharged from further consideration of the resolution, the readings of the title be waived, and that Senate Resolution Number 123 be taken up for immediate consideration.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the rules be suspended, the Committee for Courts of Justice be discharged from further consideration of the resolution, the readings of the title be waived, and Senate Resolution Number 123 be taken up for immediate consideration? All in favor of the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes forty, no zero.
Ayes forty, no zero. The rules are suspended to take up the resolution for immediate consideration. Chair recognizes Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshane.
Mr. President, I move that the resolution be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the resolution be agreed to? All in favor of agreeing to the resolution will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is agreed to. Nominations are now in order for Judges of the respective Juvenile and Domestic Relations District Courts. Chair recognizes Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshane.
Mr. President, I move that the rules be suspended, the Committee for Courts of Justice be discharged from further consideration of the resolution, the readings of the title be waived, and that Senate Resolution Number 124 be taken up for immediate consideration.
Question is, shall the rules be suspended, the Committee for Courts of Justice be discharged from further consideration of the resolution, the readings of the title be waived, and Senate Resolution Number 124 be taken up for immediate consideration? All in favor of the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes forty, no zero.
Ayes forty, no zero. The rules are suspended to take up the resolution for immediate consideration. Chair recognizes Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshane.
Mr. President, I move that the resolution be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the resolution be agreed to? All in favor of agreeing to the resolution will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is agreed to. Nominations are now in order for a Member of the Judicial Inquiry and Review Commission. Chair recognizes Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshane.
Mr. President, I move that the rules be suspended, the Committee for Courts of Justice be discharged of further consideration of the resolution, the readings of the title be waived, and that Senate Resolution Number 125 be taken up for immediate consideration.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the rules be suspended, the Committee for Courts of Justice be discharged from further consideration of the resolution, the readings of the title be waived, and Senate Resolution Number 125 be taken up for immediate consideration? As many as are in favor of the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes forty, no zero.
Ayes forty, no zero. The rules are suspended to take up the resolution for immediate consideration. Chair recognizes Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshane.
Mr. President, finally, I move the resolution be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the resolution be agreed to? As many as are in favor of agreeing to the resolution will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is agreed to. Chair directs the Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshane, to inform the House of Delegates of the nominations that have been made by the Senate. Senate will stand at ease. Senate will come to order. The senators will please take their seats.
Returning to page 30, House Bill 2356.
Senator from Augusta, Senator Hager.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the Senate, I move passage of the bill and speak to that.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Senate. House Bill 2356 is identical to a bill previously passed by the Senate. This is the bill that establishes the framework for the grant program which was used to incentivize a major employer to locate in Arlington, Virginia. That major employer is also in the news today in that they have just announced that we are the sole winner, that they have vacated their options in going to New York City. And so I would say that this is probably very good news for us, and this is a good bill to pass at this time. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard on House Bill 2356? Seeing none, the question is, shall House Bill 2356 pass? All in favor of the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes thirty-three, knows five.
Ayes thirty-three, knows five. House Bill 2356 passes.
On page 32, House Bill 2443.
Senior Senator from Virginia Beach, Senator Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Viewing the bill, what the bill does is establish a framework and a network at the request of the Bureau of Insurance. These are for the existing, what we refer to as multi-employer welfare affiliations. And these are groups that already exist right now, the bankers being one of them, non-for-profit hospitals being, or non-for-profit colleges being a second one, that already have this association healthcare benefit plan. I think they're growing to the size now where they can feel they can be self-insured, if you will, have generated enough and don't need to go to a currently licensed health insurance provider, that they can do it themselves. So this just establishes that framework for these association health plans that have grown to the point now where they can self-fund like major corporations do right now. Currently in the code, there is no provisions to allow for this, and this allows the framework, sets up the requirements, indicates they will pay taxes, indicates that they have to comply with ERISA and a number of other requirements. That's all the bill does, and I move the bill pass.
Thank the senator. For what purpose, Senator from Arlington, Senator Favola, rise.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to ask my colleagues to vote no on this bill, but for a couple of reasons. You know, the governor does have a task force set up to examine association plans, short-term plans, our standard plans, with some overall policy goals, one of which is to slow the rise and increase of insurance rates, to ensure that more people are covered, and also to enable us to continue to ensure those who have pre-existing conditions without having to charge them an exorbitant amount. So these association plans, in many ways, in many respects, actually are very attractive to folks who are fairly healthy, so we, there's some cherry picking in there. And unfortunately, the association plans are not held to the same rigorous date essential benefits requirements that other standard plans are held to. You know, I mean, issues such as coverage for prescription drugs and some maternity care services are not covered. So although they already exist, and I acknowledge that, and I think this bill probably does have some benefits in terms of how liability issues might be managed or how fiduciary issues might be managed, I would opt to wait until the governor's task force comes out with some broader recommendations that I expect would cover what this bill is trying to do, but also address some of the benefits that I'm talking about and some of the bigger issues about expanding our pool of uninsured, expanding the pool to enable us to cover more uninsured at a reasonable rate. So with that being said, I'd ask the body to vote no. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank the senator. For what purpose, Senator from Henrico, Senator Dunavitt, rise.
Thank you, Mr. President, to speak to the bill.
Senator has the floor.
Just to respond to a few things. The governor's study group did meet, and they did report, and they had nothing to report at the end of the year. It is true that many Virginians are going uninsured because the cost of healthcare is so extraordinarily expensive. Individuals in the individual marketplace that have no other place to purchase their health insurance can pay $10,000 more a year than they would pay if they were in an association health plan. We cannot penalize and punish young families that are trying to make ends meet for their family by making them pay $10,000 more a year for health insurance because we've created a bad marketplace with the Affordable Care Act. It is time to give these individuals choices that help them meet their family cost needs and budgeting, and I hope you will support this bill.
Thank the senator. For what purpose, Senator from Jame City County, Senator Normant, rise.
Ladies and gentlemen of the Senate, I rise in support of the bill, and I encourage you to vote in favor of it. I think that the senior senator from Virginia Beach and the doctor senator from Henrico have adequately explained it.
Do any senators, other than Senator Wagner, wish to be heard on the bill? For what purpose, Senator from Western Fairfax, Senator Marsden, rise.
Thank you, Mr. President. Would the senior senator from Virginia Beach yield the floor?
Senator Yiel, for a question?
I yield.
Senator Yiel, yield the floor.
Mr. President, with these high deductibles of sometimes up to $20,000, if people are unable to pay all of that before getting, and they still owe some money to, for services, does the, the question would be, does the insurance kick in even though they still may not have paid all of the deductible at that point in time? They've tried, they've paid part of it, they've done the best they can, but would the insurance then kick in?
Let me just say this.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, if there's a deductible, and that has to do with any policy, what we're doing here, and let's back the boat up just a little bit, this deals only with those associations that already, we allow those. That would be the non-for-profit colleges, private universities around the Commonwealth, and I believe the bankers have the same thing. Okay, this had nothing to do with the premiums or the size of the deductibles or anything else. And if we want to lower the health insurance costs for those groups that are already in there, then you want to vote for this bill. If you want to lower the out-of-pocket cost for the people that are already in these groups, we're not adding any groups here. There are those that speak to farmers, there are those that speak to the Chamber of Commerce. I support those bills too, but this bill has nothing to do with that. This bill has said that these organizations have grown to the point now where they can self-insure. They don't need to pay the premium to an insurance company that they're currently going to right now. This organization's already there. It's a multi-employer welfare affiliation. We've already authorized it for the bankers, we've already authorized it for the private universities and colleges for their employees. It is a money savings operation for those institutions. That happened years ago in assembly. What's happened is the pool of money and the pool of employees, which is what we'd like to have, has grown to the point now where they can save money on behalf of the plan, on behalf of their employers by self-insuring and not having to go there. However, there was never a provision in our code to allow that. And so what this does is allow for these organizations that have grown to that point, which I think is a good thing, to self-insure. In other words, cut the insurance company out of it because it's cheaper for them to administer that plan, and it saves the associations, it saves those private colleges and universities, it saves the bankers' money, and it saves their employees' money. That's all this bill does. There are other bills we talk about with the Chamber of Commerce and some of the things I've heard from some of the concerns about that. And we can talk about deductibles and their inability to pay deductibles into different legislation, but that's not what this bill does. And so I hope you support this bill.
Thank the senator. Question is, shall House Bill 2443 pass? All in favor of the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes twenty-nine, knows eleven.
Ayes twenty-nine, knows eleven. House Bill 2443 passes. Returning to judges. Pursuant to the joint order, it is now in order that the rolls be called. As many as are in favor of the nominee of the Senate as named by Senate Resolution Number 120 to be Justice of the Supreme Court of Virginia will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes thirty-six, knows zero.
Ayes thirty-six, knows zero. As many as are in favor of the nominee of the Senate as named by Senate Resolution Number 121 to be a Judge of the Court of Appeals of Virginia will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes thirty-seven, knows zero.
Ayes thirty-seven, knows zero. All in favor of the nominees of the Senate as named by Senate Resolution Number 122 to be Judges of the respective Circuit Courts will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes forty, knows zero.
Ayes forty, knows zero. All in favor of the nominees of the Senate as named by Senate Resolution Number 123 to be Judges of the respective General District Courts will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes forty, knows zero.
Ayes forty, knows zero. All in favor of the nominees of the Senate as named by Senate Resolution Number 124 to be Judges of the respective Juvenile and Domestic Relations District Courts will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes thirty-nine, knows zero.
Ayes thirty-nine, knows zero. As many as are in favor of the nominees of the Senate as named by Senate Resolution Number 125 to be a Member of the Judicial Inquiry and Review Commission will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes forty, knows zero.
Ayes forty, knows zero. Chair appoints Senators Sturtevant, Peak, and Peterson the Committee on the Part of the Senate to count and report the vote of each House in each case. Senate will stand Will come to order. The senators will please take their seats. Those persons entitled to the privilege of the floor will please retire to the gallery. The joint order under House Joint Resolution Number 979 will be resumed. The clerk will read the report of the committee to count the vote.
The committee has reported as follows. Number of votes necessary to elect in the House of Delegates, fifty. In the Senate, twenty-one.
Chair recognizes, Mr. President, Senator from Hanover, Senator McDougal.
If the clerk could please read all of the votes.
If the clerk could please read all of the votes. Or waive the reading of the votes.
Question is, shall the reading of the report be waived? All in favor of the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 34, nays, five.
Ayes, 34, no's five. The reading of the report is waived. Those named in the report as having received the vote of a majority of the members elected to each house of the General Assembly are declared duly elected. A justice of the Supreme Court of Virginia, a judge of the Court of Appeals of Virginia, as judges of the respective circuit courts, general district courts, and juvenile and domestic relations district courts, and as a member of the Judicial and Inquiry Review Commission for the terms that have been set forth.
Turning to page.
Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Servell.
Point of order.
Senator has the floor.
Can the president or Madam Clerk confirm that everybody in the resolutions get all the votes necessary? Every single person? Okay. Nobody, nobody, okay, got it. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Senator from Jame City County, Senator Norman.
Mr. President, to try to give the gentleman some assurance, I can assure you that there would not be a report that would be rendered to the contrary. So you may rest assured that if the senator from Hanover moves to waive the reading, that they all received more than the requisite number of votes.
Thank the senator. Madam Clerk.
On page 33, House Bill 2477.
Senior Senator from Virginia Beach, Senator Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. President. What House Bill 2477 does is recognize a situation with, this only applies to one current public utility, and that would be Appalachian Power. And what this does is vary a little bit from the five-year requirement of notification. If you use a private licensed electric supplier other than the incumbent utility in the area, the current code requires you to do five years of notification prior to coming back into the incumbent utilities, being the incumbent utilities customer if you use another source of generation. This bill applies to Appalachian Power's territory, and what it does is, is say that if you, it then requires somebody who moves out to cover the overhead costs, if you will, not the cost of generation, but the cost of transmission and reasonable operating and maintaining expenses for that, plus the reasonable fee as set by the State Corporation Commission. With that requirement, you would only have to provide three years' notification prior to returning back to the incumbent utility as a service. And without explanation, I move the bill pass.
Thank the senator. For what purpose, Senator from Fairfax City, Senator Peterson, rise.
Gentlemen, you have a question.
Senator Yiel.
I yield.
Senator Yiel, you have the floor.
And I'd ask the gentleman, I think his explanation was pretty good, but let me just ask you. You said that the overhead costs, you'll continue to pay them even if you're no longer a customer of Appalachian Power.
That would be true.
Further question?
Further question? Senator Yiel.
And you also said that you have to give a three-year notice in order to opt out. Is that correct?
No. What I said was you have to give a three-year notice in order to come back.
Further question, Mr. Chair, Mr. President?
I yield.
Senator has the floor.
So in other words, if you leave and then decide to go back into the network, you have to give a three-year notice?
Senator has the floor. That is right. Currently, if you left and come back, you'd have to give a five-year notice.
Further question, Mr. President?
I yield.
Senator has the floor.
I believe under the five years, there's still a good faith exception, or excuse me, a good cause exception, if basically if you have no other place where you can obtain power, you can come in on a good, a good cause exception.
I would respond to the gentleman that that is the case, that if for some reason you went to a different supplier, and that supplier was to go bankrupt, or that supplier was failed to deliver on his contract, or certain, certain exceptions like that, then they could petition back to the state corporation to get an exemption from the five-year requirement and come back into the public utilities network as a customer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I speak to the bill at appropriate time.
That'll be now. For what purpose, Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Servell, rise.
Could the bill go by for the day so we could try and sort some stuff out, try and minimize further discussion about it?
I'd look forward to discussing this again tomorrow. Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Without objection, House Bill 2477 will go by for the day.
Page 39, House Bill 2738.
Senior Senator from Virginia Beach, Senator Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. President. And we have seen an exact duplicate of this bill prior to a Senate bill. I don't recall the number. This is the bill that allows utilities, not just power companies, but gas companies, those providing internet access, water, sewer, to gain the right-of-way to help develop some mega sites, to have sites ready to go within the Commonwealth of Virginia. We certainly identified a lot of potential areas, but the need to have assurance that the utilities can be run to those areas, and that's what this bill would provide. Doesn't necessarily call for the running of the utilities, but does allow slight rate recoveries to, to those utilities where sites have been identified. That site has to be carefully vetted, and it has to be signed off by the Virginia Economic Development Partnership, and the SEC has to carefully review all the rates, proposed rates, to gain access to the right-of-way. But we have lost several economic development opportunities to other states simply because we didn't have the sites ready to go with the assurances that we can run the utilities to those sites. So that's what this bill does. I believe it's supported, I know it's supported by the third floor, and I would hope you would support it also.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard on House Bill 2738? Seeing now, the question is, shall House Bill 2738 pass? All in favor of the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 37, no's three.
Ayes, 37, no's three. House Bill 2738 passes.
On page 40, House Bill 2786.
Senior Senator from Virginia Beach, Senator Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think we've discussed this bill literally for hours on the floor. This is the coal ash bill. Unless anybody has any questions, I move the bill pass.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard on House Bill 2786? Seeing now, the question is, shall House Bill 2786 pass? All in favor of the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 38, no's two.
Ayes, 38, no's two. House Bill 2786 passes.
On page 41, House Bill 2792.
Senior Senator from Virginia Beach, Senator Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. President. What House Bill 2792 is allow the direct state corporation commission to establish a pilot program directed towards municipalities that may wish to create small renewable energy projects. And basically, it's an aggregation form. It's limited to two megawatts. I believe the city of Alexandria has expressed significant interest in proceeding ahead with this. It just allows the localities to, may have big school areas or may have large areas of land that may be suitable for putting up solar panels, but may not be adjacent or on top of an existing building. So it allows unlimited aggregation of electricity to other municipal buildings to help implement renewable energy programs throughout the state and also help reduce the taxpayers' burden for electric charges. That's all the bill does. I move the bill pass.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard on House Bill 2792? Seeing now, the question is, shall House Bill 2792 pass? All in favor of the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 39, no's one.
Ayes, 39, no's one. House Bill 2792 passes.
Regular calendar House Bill's on third reading. House Bill 1625, a bill relating to animal care, adequate shelter, adverse weather conditions. Reported from the Committee on Agricultural Conservation and Natural Resources with a substitute, and there is a floor substitute.
Senator from King George, Senator Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. President. Parliamentary inquiry, we did not adopt that substitute at any point yet. I know this has gone by several days.
Correct.
Great. Mr. President, first, I would move that the committee substitute be adopted with a recommendation that it be rejected.
Thank the senator. With the recommendation that it be rejected, the question is, shall the committee substitute be adopted? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no.
No.
The noes have it. The committee substitute is rejected. Senator from King George, Senator Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, and with the permission and cooperation of the Senator from Northern Chesapeake, I'm going to work through the substitute. First, I'd move we waive reading of the floor substitute.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the reading of the floor substitute be waived? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The reading of the floor substitute is waived.
I can read it if they want, Mr. President.
No, it's okay. Proceed.
Move the floor substitute pass, and speaking to that.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, members of the body, for the past at least couple years, the Senator from Northern Chesapeake, Senator Spruill, has worked very diligently to bring about some reasonable measures to protect animals that are outdoors, and particularly tethered animals. He's had a negotiation with a member of the inferior body down the hall, and they keep going back and forth on it. And what this substitute is, is a compromise substitute that Senator Spruill's been able to work out. And if you look at it on page two, lines 32 to 35, it modifies the definition of adequate shelter. Further down on page two, it gives some requirements under adequate space on lines 47, which has to do with tethering, and that continues on. And that's the substance of this bill. And there've been many versions, and I probably haven't supported many of them, quite frankly, because it gives me a little bit of concern. But the Senator from Northern Chesapeake has worked really hard on this. I think it represents a pretty good compromise, and I'm going to support it this time because I'm hoping we won't have to keep having these dog bills. So I would encourage everybody to support the substitute in the bill.
Thank the senator. Question is, shall the floor substitute be adopted? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The floor substitute is adopted. Senator from King George, Senator Stewart.
And with that explanation, Mr. President, I hope everybody will support the bill.
Thank the senator. Question is, shall House Bill 1625 pass? All in favor of the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 34, no's six.
Ayes, 34, no's six. House Bill 1625 passes.
House Bill 1634, a bill relating to an additional local sales and use tax in Halifax County, appropriations of Halifax County to incorporated towns for educational purposes. Reported from the Committee on Finance with an amendment.
Senator from Augusta, Senator Hanger.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask that that bill go by for the day.
Without objection, House Bill 1634 will go by for the day.
House Bill 1650, a bill relating to the Virginia Lottery Disclosure of Identity of Winners. Reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology with a substitute.
Senator from Mecklenburg, Senator Ruff.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the committee substitute.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is agreed to. Senator from Mecklenburg, Senator Ruff.
Mr. President.
For what purpose, Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Servell, rise.
Can that bill go by temporarily?
Without objection, House Bill 1650 will go by temporarily.
House Bill 1746, a bill relating to the Virginia Initiative for Employment Not Welfare Name Change. Reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology.
Senator from Mecklenburg, Senator Ruff.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the bill pass, and speaking to that.
Senator has the floor.
It renames the Initiative for Employment Not Welfare to the Virginia Initiative for Education and Work, and I wholeheartedly support that.
Thank the senator. For what purpose, Senator from Arlington, Senator Favola, rise.
Mr. Chairman, I rise to speak to the bill as well.
Senator has the floor.
I too wholeheartedly support the bill. This idea came out of the Commission on Youth, and we wanted to reinforce the importance of education, especially if families are to become self-sufficient. This is a very good idea, so I am also enthusiastic. I hope we pass the measure. Thank you.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard on House Bill 1746? Seeing now, the question is, shall House Bill 1746 pass? All in favor of the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 37, no's two.
Ayes, 37, no's two. House Bill 1746 passes.
House Bill 2292, a bill relating to electric utilities' energy efficiency programs. Reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor with a substitute.
Senior Senator from Virginia Beach, Senator Wagner.
Mr. President, I move the substitute be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is agreed to. The senior Senator from Virginia Beach, Senator Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. President. What House Bill 2292 does is require that the, if the state corporation commission finds an energy efficiency program submitted by a public utility not in the public interest, that with that decision, they have to turn over the paperwork and make public and available their work product and the analysis of how they came to that determination that it was not in the public interest. It further goes on to state that when there is an energy efficiency program that is put into place, that will stay in place until all the allotted dollars are used and up in the energy efficiency program. And with that explanation, I move the bill pass.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard on House Bill 2292? Seeing now, the question is, shall House Bill 2292 pass? All in favor of the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 39, no's zero. Rule 36-1.
Ayes, 39, no's zero. Rule 36-1. House Bill 2292 passes.
House Bill 2327, a bill relating to the Department of Professional and Occupational Regulation on Licensed Practice Cease and Desist Notices. Reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology with amendments.
Senator from Mecklenburg, Senator Ruff.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the committee amendment.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee amendments be adopted? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee amendments are adopted. Senator from Mecklenburg, Senator Ruff.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the bill pass, and this permits the Director of Depot or his designee to issue a notice of any person unlawfully engaged in unlicensed practice of an occupation to cease and desist such activity.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard on House Bill 2327? Seeing none, the question is, shall House Bill 2327 pass? All in favor, the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 40, noes 0.
Ayes 40, noes 0. House Bill 2327 passes.
House Bill 2339, a bill relating to the Department of Taxation sharing information with the Department of Social Services. Reported from the Committee on Finance, and there are four floor amendments.
Senator from Augusta, Senator Hanger.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would first ask permission to remove the floor amendments. You got one, too?
All right.
Let's remove his two.
Without objection, the floor amendments are withdrawn.
Okay. Okay. And with that, Mr. President, and just an explanation, the senator from Hanover had raised some concerns about this particular bill, and we were trying to address those concerns, but they were not done very precisely with these amendments. So I'm going to ask that the bill go by for the day so we can draw a more accurate amendment to reach his concerns. Thank you.
Thank the senator. Without objection, House Bill 2339 will go by for the day.
House Bill 2547, a bill relating to electric utilities' net energy metering by electric cooperatives, community solar development. Reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor with amendment, and there is a floor amendment.
Senior Senator from Virginia Beach, Senator Wagner.
Mr. President, I was going to say, I'm not familiar with the floor amendment.
Okay. Senior Senator from Richmond City, Senator Sturdivan.
Mr. President, I move that the floor amendment, reading of the floor amendment be waived.
We need to move the committee amendment first.
Move that the committee amendment be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee amendment be agreed to? All in favor, the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the committee amendment is agreed to. The senior senator from Richmond City, Senator Sturdivan.
Mr. President, I move that we waive the reading of the floor amendment.
Question is, shall the reading of the floor amendment be waived? All in favor, the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the reading of the floor amendment is waived. Senior Senator from Richmond City, Senator Sturdivan.
Mr. President, I move that we agree to the floor amendment in speaking to that.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, members of the Senate, this is a net metering bill that came out of the Rubin Group for the Co-op Territories. It also convenes a stakeholder group to address net metering technology and advancements in that area. And what this amendment does is it includes in the stakeholder group, requires that energy efficiency advocates also be included in that stakeholder group. And with that, I move that the floor amendment pass.
Thank the senator. Question is, shall the floor amendment be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the floor amendment is adopted. Senior Senator from Virginia Beach, Senator Wagner.
Mr. President, the senator from Richmond City, I think, explained it very well, and I move the bill pass.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard on House Bill 2547? Seeing none, the question is, shall House Bill 2547 pass? All in favor, the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 36, noes 4.
Ayes 36, noes 4. House Bill 2547 passes.
House Bill 2647, a bill relating to the Condominium Act, Meetings of Unit Owners' Associations, Proxy Voting. Reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology.
Senator from Mecklenburg, Senator Ruff.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the bill pass in speaking to that motion.
Senator has the floor.
This provides that any proxy shall be void if not signed by or on behalf of the unit owner. The bill also provides that if the unit owner is more than one person, any such unit owner may object to the proxy at or prior to the meeting. Renew my motion.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard on House Bill 2647? Seeing none, the question is, shall House Bill 2647 pass? All in favor, the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 39, noes 1.
Ayes 39, noes 1. House Bill 2647 passes.
House Bill 2694, a bill relating to Property Owners Association Act, Association Meetings Noticed by Email. Reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology.
Senator from Mecklenburg, Senator Ruff.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the bill pass in speaking to this.
Senator has the floor.
This allows members of property owners' associations to elect to receive notice of meetings of the association by email in lieu of the current requirement that such notice be sent by the mail or hand-delivered, provided that in the event that such electronic mail is returned as undeliverable, notice is subsequently sent by the U.S. mail. I renew my motion.
Thank the senator. For what purpose, Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Servail, rise.
Speaking of bill, very briefly.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, the reason I didn't like this bill in committee and still don't like it is, you know, you read the bill and you say, oh, well, you get everything by email now, why don't we do notice of meetings by email at HOAs? The reason is, when you're getting notices about these HOAs, it relates to your property rights, it relates to your assessments, it relates to what color you can paint your house. Very significant property rights are affected by the meetings they have and the notices you get, money you pay every month, and email doesn't always work. I can't tell you how many times in the last two months I have sent emails that either somebody said they never got, they got caught in a spam filter, and the person on the other side didn't get a return notice saying the email was undelivered. And I just don't think when you're making decisions, when a group is making decisions that can affect your property rights that are this significant, they ought to be able to let you know electronically that they're going to have a meeting about it or they're making some decision. I think it ought to be by first-class mail. It's too important of an issue for it to be done by email. And that's why I didn't support it. I still don't support it. I think it's very dangerous, and I think we're going to be back here in a year or two or three where somebody said, you know, they passed the budget, they voted on something about my house, and I never found out because I didn't get the email, and we'll be back rewinding this. So that's why I think we shouldn't support it.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard on House Bill 2694? Seeing none, the question is, shall House Bill 2694 pass? All in favor, the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 30, noes 10.
Ayes 30, noes 10. House Bill 2694 passes.
House Bill 2768, a bill relating to Clerk of Court Disclosure of Tax Information. Reported from the Committee on Finance.
Senator from Augusta, Senator Hanger.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill pass in speaking to that.
Thank the senator. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. This particular bill is on the regular calendar because one of our members of the committee had a conflict of interest, but what it would do is allow disclosure of confidential tax information contained in an estate's probate tax return filed with the clerk of the court. It allowed disclosure of that information when it's requested by the Commissioner of Accounts, making settlement of accounts filed in such a state. Move passage.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard on House Bill 2768? Seeing none, the question is, shall House Bill 2768 pass? All in favor, the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 38, noes 0, Rule 36-1.
Ayes 38, noes 0, Rule 36-1. House Bill 2768 passes.
Uncontested calendar House Bills on second reading.
Senator from James City County, Senator Norman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would now move all the House Bills on both the uncontested and regular calendar, which would include all House Bills on pages 45 through page 75, including House Bill 1614 through House Bill 2764, that the rules of the Senate be suspended, and that the second constitutional reading of the titles be dispensed with.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the rules be suspended in the second reading of the titles of House Bills on the uncontested and regular calendars, pages 45 through 75, House Bill 1614 through House Bill 2764 be dispensed with? All in favor, the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 40, noes 0.
Ayes 40, noes 0. The reading of the titles is dispensed with. Senator from James City County, Senator Norman.
Mr. President, I'd now move that all the House Bills which find themselves on the third reading be passed by for the day.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the House Bills on the uncontested and regular calendars now on third reading be passed by for the day? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the bills will go by for the day.
Page 76, uncontested calendar House Joint Resolution on Second Reading. House Joint Resolution 676, proposing amendment to Section 6 of Article 10 of the Constitution of Virginia relating to personal property tax exemption motor vehicle owned by disabled veteran. Regular calendar, House Joint Resolutions on Second Reading. House Joint Resolution 591, proposing an amendment to Section 6 of Article 2 of the Constitution of Virginia relating to appointment, technical adjustments permitted. House Joint Resolution 615, proposing an amendment to Section 6 of Article 2 of the Constitution of Virginia and proposing amendments to the Constitution of Virginia by adding in Article 2, Sections numbers 6-A, 6-B, relating to apportionment state and local independent redistricting commissions. Memorial Resolutions.
Senator from James City County, Senator Norman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would now move all the memorial resolutions on pages 77 through 81 of the calendar, including House Joint Resolution 781 through Senate Resolution 115, be placed on the final passage in the block, waiving the reading of the resolution to be passed in the usual manner. Any senator who may desire to remove a memorial resolution from the block should please do so after the clerk has read the title of that resolution.
Senator, the question is, shall the memorial resolutions on pages 77 through 81, House Joint Resolution 781 through Senate Resolution 115, be considered in the block in the usual manner, waiving the reading of the resolutions thereof, with the understanding that any senator desiring a resolution be removed from the block will do so after the clerk has read the title of the resolution? All in favor, the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion is agreed to. The resolutions are before us in the block. The clerk will read the titles of the memorial resolutions.
House Joint Resolution 781, celebrating the life of Thelma Virginia Dodson. House Joint Resolution 795, celebrating the life of Leslie Bain Lord. House Joint Resolution 796, celebrating the life of John H. Chenard. House Joint Resolution 797, celebrating the life of Barbara, Mary Barbara Kirk-Hogue. House Joint Resolution 798, celebrating the life of Earl V. Carl. House Joint Resolution 799, celebrating the life of Thomas Francis Byrne. House Joint Resolution 800, celebrating the life of Robert Joseph Kniglio. House Joint Resolution 801, celebrating the life of Cleonia B. Ramsey Agnes Olson. House Joint Resolution 802, celebrating the life of Edna Bounds. House Joint Resolution 811, celebrating the life of Edwin Burwell Jones Whitmore III. House Joint Resolution 812, celebrating the life of Barbara Beatrice Abernathy Ross. House Joint Resolution 819, celebrating the life of the Honorable Ernest Pleasence Gates. House Joint Resolution 830, celebrating the life of Sylvia Overton McLaughlin. House Joint Resolution 834, celebrating the life of Scott Marvin Anderson. House Joint Resolution 839, celebrating the life of Chrisia and Sarah Henderson Burns. House Joint Resolution 840, celebrating the life of Walter T. Kenny Sr. Senate Joint Resolution 359, celebrating the life of Scott Marvin Anderson. Senate Joint Resolution 364, celebrating the life of David C. Creasy Sr. Senate Joint Resolution 368, celebrating the life of Donald Robert McHag. Senate Joint Resolution 369, celebrating the life of Captain Andrew Patrick Ross, United States Army. Senate Joint Resolution 370, celebrating the life of Sue Kimball Dudley. Senate Joint Resolution 371, celebrating the life of James William Bryan Jr. Senate Joint Resolution 372, celebrating the life of Carl David Brinkley. Senate Joint Resolution 372, celebrating the life of William E. Edwards. Senate Joint Resolution 376, celebrating the life of Edmund John Kelly. Senate Joint Resolution 377, celebrating the life of Garner Allen Barker. Senate Joint Resolution 378, celebrating the life of Joseph Frederick Honeycutt. Senate Joint Resolution 380, celebrating the life of Walter T. Kenny Sr. Senate Joint Resolution 384, celebrating the life of Joseph C. Whitaker. Senate Joint Resolution 385, celebrating the life of Tyler McClellan Spruill. Senate Joint Resolution 387, celebrating the life of Jennifer Maribal Divers. Senate Joint Resolution 388, celebrating the life of Trooper Lucas B. Dowell. Senate Resolution 108, celebrating the life of Michael Timothy Tilly. Senate Resolution 113, celebrating the life of John Marshall Raznick Jr. Senate Resolution 114, celebrating the life of Charlotte May Satterwhite Troxel. Senate Resolution 115, celebrating the life of Richard Lee Towell Sr.
The resolutions will be agreed to in the usual manner. All those in favor of agreeing to the memorial resolutions will please rise. The resolutions are agreed to.
Commending resolutions.
Senator from James City County, Senator Norman.
Mr. President, I would now move all the commending resolution on, resolutions on pages 81 through 85, which would include House Joint Resolution 742 through Senate Resolution 116, be agreed to in the block by voice vote, waiving the reading of the resolution. Any senator who may desire to remove a commending resolution from the block should please do so after the clerk has read the number of that resolution.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the commending resolutions on pages 81 through 85, House Joint Resolution 742 through Senate Resolution 116, be considered in the block by voice vote, waiving the reading of the resolutions, with the understanding that any senator desiring a resolution be removed from the block will do so after the clerk has read the number of the resolution? All in favor, the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion is agreed to. The resolutions are before us in the block. Clerk will read the numbers of the resolutions.
House Joint Resolutions 742, 749, 762, 785, 786, 791, 808, 813, 820, 821, 829, 836, 837, 838, 851, 855, 857, 916. Senate Joint Resolutions 356, 357, 360, 361, 362, 363, 367, 375, 379, 381, 382, 383, 386, 389, 390, 391, 392. Senate Resolutions 107, 110, 111, 116.
Question is, shall the resolutions be agreed to? All in favor of agreeing to the resolutions will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolutions are agreed to. James City County, Senator Norman.
An inquiry of the clerk, Mr. President, does that complete today's calendar?
We went by one bill on page 42. We went by temporarily. House Bill 1650.
Senator from Mecklenburg, Senator Ruff.
Mr. President, could that go by for the day?
Without objection, House Bill 1650 will go by for the day.
That now completes the calendar.
Is there any other business to come? Mr. President. Senator from Alexandria, Senator Eben.
Can we return to the morning hour for a point of personal privilege and a motion?
Without objection, Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen of the Senate, our offices are decorated in pink and red today, celebrating Valentine's Day. If you walked by my office, though, you may have noticed something different. Room 520 in the Pocahontas Building is not decorated for Valentine's Day. It's decorated to commemorate 17 students and teachers for whom it will never be Valentine's Day again. Never for ROTC student Peter Wang, who was planning on going to West Point, Peter died holding a door for his, open for his friends to escape. Never for freshman Alyssa Ladeff, who was only 14 and already training to play college soccer. Never for coach Aaron Feis, who will never again bring flowers home to his wife for Valentine's Day or read to his daughter again. Let me remind you what happened a year ago today. A disturbed student with a history of making violent threats walked into Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School carrying a military-style assault rifle. Douglas High School carrying a military-style assault rifle. In six minutes, he killed seventeen people. His AR-15 wasn't purchased for personal protection, for hunting, or for target practice. It was designed and outfitted to wreak the greatest havoc imaginable. The AR-15's rounds enter and exit a human body in less time than it takes to blink. This weapon can repeat this action fifty times in less than a minute. It's been used in dozens of the most infamous massacres in the last ten years, including Sandy Hook, Tree of Life, and Pulse. This isn't just about those shootings or the AR-15. It's about what's happening in America and what we are not doing to stop it. Last year, our former colleague, Senator, now Congresswoman Jennifer Wexton, stood on this floor, and she admonished us that the people who sent us here wanted us to do something. And twelve-hundred-and-ninety-seven children still die from gun-related injuries every year in the United States. This year, we had a chance to pass Senator Howell's bill, which would have made it a crime to leave a loaded firearm where a kid could easily grab it. We did nothing. We failed those kids. Since 2013, students have suffered the terror and trauma of over three-hundred shootings at schools and universities in the United States. This year, we had a chance to pass Senator Barker's bill to enable our police to confiscate weapons from those who exhibited red flags, just like the shooter at Parkland did. We did nothing. We failed those kids. Since Columbine, twenty-six thousand children and teenagers have been killed by guns in our country. This year, we had a chance to pass my bill, which would have banned the very gun used in Parkland. We did nothing. We failed those kids. It's long past time to take action. It shouldn't take another mass shooting to spur us into action. These tragedies are happening far too often. Members of the Senate, I ask you, how many more children will be dead at the hand of a gun before Valentine's Day next year? And, Mr. President, I ask that when we adjourn today, that we adjourn in memory and honor of Alyssa Aladeff, age fourteen, Scott Beagle, thirty-five, Martin Duquette, fourteen, Nicholas Dorett, seventeen, Aaron Feis, thirty-seven, Jamie Gutenberg, fourteen, Chris Hickson, forty-nine, Luke Hoyer, fifteen, Carl Laffren, fourteen, Gina Montalto, fourteen, Joaquin Oliver, seventeen, Elena Petty, fourteen, Meadow Pollock, eighteen, Helena Ramsey, seventeen, Alex Schachter, fourteen, Carmen Shentrup, sixteen, and Peter Wang, age fifteen. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank the senator. For what purposes, Senator from Arlington, Senator Favola, rise.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise on a point of personal privilege.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, too, am going to speak about the anniversary of the Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School tragedy that happened a year ago today. The Journal of Pediatrics reported just last June that gunfire each week in our country kills, on average, twenty-five children under the age of seventeen. A 2016 study in the American Journal of Medicine calculated that among two dozen of the world's wealthiest nations, this country alone accounted for ninety-one percent of firearm deaths among children fourteen years of age or younger. I submit to the body that this tragedy is real. It could happen to one of our children. It does happen to our friends, our neighbors, and I believe every child is our child, is a child of ours. There's a note that a mother who lost her daughter, her daughter was Alyssa, and this note that the mother wrote, I think it was in time of mourning, really puts this in perspective. She said, "Dear Alyssa, it's Valentine's Day, a day full of love, chocolates, and flowers. But for me, it's more than that. Last Valentine's Day was the last time I saw you. You wore a black-and-white dress, your long hair dangled. Your makeup looked just right, and of course, you wore your famous sneakers. You really didn't want to go to school that day, but now Valentine's Day is about memories. Today, like all days, I remember. I remember you weren't looking forward to going to school. Like many fourteen-year-old girls, you wanted a Valentine, and you were disappointed that you didn't receive one. High school love is magic. I was fourteen once, and those butterflies had whirled inside of me, too. I wanted that for you. I remember the golden gift bag you gave me that morning. It held a pair of diamond earrings to make you feel pretty and a chocolate bar to make you smile, and hair ties, so you wouldn't ask for mine. I touched your ears, putting the stems of those earrings through your lobes. You said you were ready to go to school. You opened the car door and said, 'I love you.' I said, 'I love you, too.' It was the last time I saw you alive. A year has been a long time without you. So much has happened, and I want to tell you, I watched your brothers miss you terribly. They want you to know they miss fighting with you. They say, 'Thank you for convincing Dad to get unlimited Wi-Fi. Dad fights for you every day. He's your voice.'" Ladies and gentlemen, we have to join this dad. We have to step up. We have to accept our responsibility. We're not going to stop every gun violence in the country. We know that. We're not going to stop every tragic accident, but we have to do better than what we're doing. We have to be able to say to our children, 'You're going to be safe when you go to school, when you go to a movie theater, when you go out to the drugstore.'" We have to reach a point where there's some balance in our society, where there's a respect for the rights of responsible gun ownership, and it's also balanced with the need for public safety. This is our country. These are our children. This is our future. It is time for us to act responsibly. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank the senator. For what purposes, Senator from Loudoun, Senator Black, rise.
I rise on a point of personal privilege.
Senator has the floor.
Ladies and gentlemen, let me begin by saying that when the Constitution of the United States was, was approved by the, by the original states, it included ten amendments. And one of those amendments was the Second Amendment, which gave to the citizens the right to keep and bear arms. You know, we, we look at some of these dramatic things, very tragic things. Let me give you a couple of examples. When I was stationed at Fort Hood, Texas, unconnected with anything in the military, there was a serial rapist who was in Colleen, Texas, which adjoins Fort Hood. And his MO was to prey on older women. And he would wait, and he would stalk, and he would break into the homes, and he'd, he would rape them. And he literally terrorized the whole community. And then one night, he found a woman. She was alone. He peeked in the window. There she was. And he began breaking in. She had a screened-in front porch, and he began cutting through the screen. The woman heard him. All that she had was a .22 caliber rifle. But she looked through her window, her screen window, and she saw him cutting through and reaching his hand in to open the door of her screen porch. And she aimed, and she fired the .22, the little .22 caliber rifle, and she struck the man in the hip, in the groin area. She then ran, and she called the police. Of course, it takes the police a little while to get there. They came, and they found a blood trail, and they traced it, and they followed it for about three blocks. They found the serial rapist dead. This woman, living alone, a widow, an elderly woman, had stopped that man and had saved her life. And that was the end of the terrorist, terrorism within Colleen, Texas. There was another event in Colleen, Texas, same, same town. I wasn't there at this time, but there was, there was a rule in Texas that you could not carry a concealed firearm into a restaurant. So there was a woman who had a concealed firearm, and she pulled up to meet with her parents, go into the restaurant. And being a law-abiding citizen, as most concealed carry holders are, she left her weapon in the truck. She went in, and then there was an individual who came in, and he proceeded to execute everybody that he could in that restaurant. It was a very famous incident at the time. It's been decades now, but he slaughtered a huge number of people. They obeyed the law. Those people in the restaurant had obeyed the law and had not carried their firearms inside the restaurant. That woman, the girl who, who had the weapon in her truck, watched as her parents were executed in that restaurant. And later, she said, "If only she had had her concealed firearm with her at the time." But she was prevented. Ladies and gentlemen, about a week ago, I read an article, it might have been two weeks ago, and it was, it was about a woman who was jogging in Washington, D.C. And she had, she had been going, and finally, she was, she was starting to cool down a little bit, and there was a man who was following her. And she walked to the other side of the street, and he followed her, and he began to pursue her. And very soon, he caught up with her. And I tell you, just, I've been through these things so many times. I have seen so many women raped by people, and I have prosecuted and overseen the prosecution of so many rapes, and it just kind of made me sick as I read through the article, because I knew the way it was going to end. But it didn't. I was wrong. And I was greatly relieved, because the man grabbed her, he pinned her to the ground, and instead of him carrying out the rape, she fought back. She was very physically fit, very strong, and she managed to scratch his eyes. She scratched his glasses off of his face, and the man went fleeing. And I was just so relieved to see that she had escaped. Earlier in the day, he had attacked another woman, and she had not escaped. And I thought, you know what? If that young lady had been able to have a firearm, it wouldn't have to be a big one. Because when you're, when a woman is defending herself against someone who is intent on doing her physical, a physical assault against her, he's going to be close, and she's not going to miss. And it doesn't have to be a real sophisticated firearm, but it's got to be something. I've seen so many of these things. I built homes in Liberty City in Miami. It's a very, very tough neighborhood, and it was a government-subsidized program, and we built the homes. And I recall so vividly, there was a delightful woman, African-American woman with two children, and I was walking her to her home so that she could make the inspection, and I could turn the, the keys over to her. And I can recall that precise place I was standing on a sidewalk when it struck me, and I thought, "I hope this woman has a gun. I really hope she does." She was a single woman, and she was in a rough, rough neighborhood. I have no idea. My prayers are with her. I hope everything went well. Frankly, I hope she had a gun. But I'm going to tell you, there is a reason for the Second Amendment, and one of the principal purposes is so that people are not defenseless if they choose not to be defenseless. And I, I, you look at Virginia, and you compare it to Chicago, you compare it to Detroit, you compare it to D.C. We have fairly reasonable firearms rules, and we have a low rate of crime and a low rate of violence, and people don't have to live in fear. If you are a helpless person, if you are a defenseless person, and you hear somebody coming through your window, what do you do? Oh, maybe if you're a big, tough guy, maybe if you're our senator over here, that's one thing. But what if you're an elderly person? What if you are a lone widow? What do you do except sit there and wait for the inevitable? So ladies and gentlemen, I am very pleased that the founders of this nation gave us the Second Amendment and the right to keep and bear arms, and I think people in this country are going to defend that with their last breath. Thank you very much.
For purposes, Senator from Grayson, Senator Carrico, rise.
I think my seatmate tore my mic up. Point of personal privilege.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, just real briefly, I, while I agree with my colleagues on the other side that the events of last year is disturbing, and especially the young man that committed these crimes, and that we should be concerned about what happened there, not so much about the weapon, but about the mindset which that young man had when he went into that school and he took the lives of all these young people. And I believe that we have made great strides in this Commonwealth through discussions in mental health and making mental health accessible to individuals in order to try to prevent some of these things that's happened. I don't so much believe that it was the weapon, because it always has to have someone behind it for it to create such mass carnage. But I'm glad that my friends on the other side of the aisle want to have a conversation about it, because the conversation should be about our children and the most vulnerable. So we should be having that conversation, because since 1973, when Roe v. Wade was introduced, sixty million, nine-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-and-thirty-three children have been part of that mass carnage. Thank you.
For purposes, Senator from Hampton, Senator Locke, rise.
Mr. President, I rise on a point of personal privilege.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, this is not about Roe versus Wade or abortion. It has been one year since the tragic shooting at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School in Parkland, Florida, where seventeen innocent lives were lost. One year later, this Senate has not passed a single gun violence prevention, prevention measure. During that same period, Virginia has lost over one thousand people, many of whom are children under the age of eighteen, to senseless gun violence. Today, I share with you the names of thirty-four children who've lost their lives to gun violence in the last three-hundred-and-sixty-five days. Matthew Ortega, DeMarcus Antoine Hooper, Jr., Latifa Anay Hutnall, Elijah Demonte McLean, Noah W. Gallegos, Jaleel Shaheed Yates, James Galygian, IV, Stephen Wayne Glenn, Jr., Jamari Therese Sanders, Demetrius Jefferson, Tyson Beckett Aponte, Giovanni Legurgo, Miranda Beth Trump, DeJani Manay Leary, Brooklyn Youngblood, Tahami Ayaz, Damonta L. Faircloth, Israel Gomez, Leana Semlau, Avery Pope Moore, Monte Israel Gomez, Leona Semlau, Avery Pope Moore, Monty Devon Hughes, Sharon Castro, Mirage Ayas, Kashan Lamont Dickerson, Dashon Angel Burgos, Yashon D. Robinson, Christopher Patrick Ross, Vanessa Zaman, Kamon Battle, James Boyd Morehead, Jr., Nicholas Christian Bernard, Ramon Cassadeen Davis, Orlando Myron Anderson, Jr. As we remember the students and staff lost at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School and the Virginia children whose lives were cut short by senseless gun violence, I challenge my colleagues on both sides of the aisle to recommit to passing common sense gun violence prevention measures that will save lives. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank the Senator. For what purpose, Senator from Southern Fairfax, Senator Barker rise.
Mr. President, I rise for a point of personal privilege.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, today on Valentine's Day, we do commemorate the one-year anniversary of this tragic school shooting at Parkland, Florida that took the lives of 17 students and staff. We also, as the Senator from Hampton mentioned, however, should remember that over the last year, or in the last year in 2018, 1,028 Virginians lost their lives to gun violence. In the 12 years since the shooting at Virginia Tech certainly captured attention in the Commonwealth of Virginia and that took over 30 lives, we've lost thousands of Virginians to gun violence. And in the last decade plus, we have seen the homicide rate in Virginia rise by 28%. We should not allow this to continue without taking action. We need to work together to address this while protecting the rights of all Virginians. I've had legislation over the last several years to address issues confronting many of the situations that have resulted in mass shootings where someone was known to be immediate risk to gun violence, likely or certainly a significant risk to use a gun to kill or maim himself, herself, or others. The legislation would provide a mechanism to temporarily, only temporarily, remove a gun from someone who had that immediate risk. It's been labeled extreme risk protection law, risk warrant, red flag legislation. The critical factor is that it would be a temporary measure that would be able to remove someone's gun when they were, because of their situation and what their intents were, when they were a significant risk to kill others or themselves. During General Assembly sessions every year, we are visited by many members of the Citizens Defense League, the NRA, and other groups. And frequently when they come to my office, because I've had this legislation in, we end up in discussions on it. What has impressed me is that almost without exception, those members understand the value of removing a gun from someone who has a significant risk to use that in harmful ways. What we have to do is figure out how we provide the due process to make sure that we can reach consensus or broad acceptance on this. Since Parkland, one of the major actions that have been taken in states across the country has been this type of legislation. It's partly been because it doesn't remove any particular gun, it doesn't take anyone's gun away permanently, it only addresses a short-term situation and provides restoration of that person's gun rights after the situation has passed. It's also become something that has been acted on by many states in the past year, partly because of the activity of the students at Parkland High School, but also because of political leadership that has helped move it forward in many states that have had Republican governors or Republican legislatures to get it passed. One of the key proponents of this has been Vice President Pence. He did this because of what happened in Indiana that led Indiana to becoming one of the first states to have this legislation. In Indiana, what you had was an individual who stated boldly that he would kill police officers in the city of Indianapolis. The police went to the authorities and tried to figure out what they could do to address this situation, how they could take that gun away from him. And were told that there was nothing on the books that would allow anyone to take that gun away until he had used it in a harmful or deadly matter. Unfortunately, he delivered through on his promise and killed a police officer in Indiana. We also have had a commission that was established by President Trump that came up with recommendations. One of the specific recommendations was to have this type of legislation adopted across the country. In the last year, many states, including, as I said, many who had either Republican governors or Republican legislatures or both, have passed such legislation. And the number of states with these types of laws has gone from, I believe it was four a year ago, to 13 now. And I had hoped that this year we might make it 14. In previous years, my legislation often has been considered by the Courts of Justice Committee, but in the end, along with many other measures, has been defeated with little if any discussion. This year, however, it was different. There was substantive discussion on the legislation. And I thank the Chairman, Senator Obenshein, the Senator from Rockingham, as well as the Senator from King George who filled in for part-time that day and made sure that there was a fair discussion and substantive discussion on this. And there were amendments made to the legislation that I had proposed that in many respects, I think, improved the legislation and helped it move towards a sense of compromise that would be able to get it adopted. The legislation did not advance this year, but it was not defeated in aggregate. It died on a tie vote. So I think that we are making progress on this. I challenge us to work together this year so that in 2020, we can pass legislation on a bipartisan basis to address this issue and to make Virginia one of the states that provides this protection that in many states that have enacted it, they have determined through assessments of things, has actually prevented significant numbers of gun deaths or gun attacks on people. On this tragic anniversary, let us never again say it is too soon for political action in the wake of tragedy. Our action is long overdue. Let's figure out how we get to yes in 2020. Thank you.
Senator, for what purpose, the senior senator from Chesapeake, Senator Cosgrove
For a motion, Mr. President.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier, I made the motion, beginning of the session, to adjourn in the honor memory of our colleague Fred Quayle. I'm going to withdraw that motion and offer it another day when there's not an orchestrated set of personal privileged points. Thank you.
Thank the Senator. Senator will so note. For what purpose, Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshein rise.
Mr. President, I rise for a point of personal privilege.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, members of the Senate, I certainly had no intention of rising to speak and certainly have no prepared remarks. But I want to tell you that I, like I suspect every member of this chamber, weep for the children who died at Marjory Stoneman School in Florida. I regret that some believe that the solution to tragedies like that are so simple. The fact of the matter is, they are far, but simple. If we could just say, nobody should commit a mass killing and make it so, we'd do it. The fact of the matter is that in Florida and across the country, we try an awful lot of things, well-intentioned things, to prevent tragedies like this. And I'm not suggesting that the efforts of those who suggest that banning guns is not well-intentioned. I'm confident that it is. But I respectfully submit that it's naive to suggest that that would have prevented these horrible murders. Let me tell you, there's a guy named Andrew Pollak, who is the father of one of the children murdered at Marjory Stoneman. And Andrew Pollak is traveling the country, telling people Meadow's story and about how complicated this issue really is. It's not about guns. It's not about just finding a panacea, some simple way to prevent this from ever happening again. Because if there was a simple way, we'd have done it. You know, in Florida, they adopted this program called Preventing, it's called PROMIS. It's called Preventing Recidivism Through Opportunity Mentoring Intervention Support and Education. And I'm confident that it was a well-intentioned program. It is a program that flowed from a 2014 federal initiative that sought to divert students who commit crimes from having a police record. And, you know, in a lot of circumstances, I'd say that's laudable. But what happened in Florida is nothing short of shocking and astonishing. What happened was that the murderer, and Andrew Pollak can't even bring himself to say his name, but the murderer was somebody who had a long, long record. And school officials and law enforcement officials had so many opportunities to prevent these murders from happening that he considers it criminal to have not done so. It goes back to middle school where administrators sought not to report him to police, but they found him so dangerous that he was required to have adult supervision with him all the time, all the time. In high school, he vandalized a bathroom, causing $1,000 worth of damage. He racially abused black students and had fistfights with them on a regular basis. He carved swastikas on his desk. He threw furniture across classrooms. He threw hard objects at students, brought dead animals to school and waved them before other students. He threatened to kill teachers and other students and threatened to shoot up the school. He wrote "kill" on his notebooks and wrote frequently about guns. He brought knives to school and in one occasion, he brought a backpack full of bullets. And after that, the school banned him from wearing backpacks. Got that? Banned him from wearing backpacks. You know, Mr. Pollak says if he was too dangerous to wear a backpack, why was he not too dangerous to be in school with kids like Meadow? You know, then his mother, the murderer, his mother, she died three months before he committed this horrendous crime. Mr., the murderer, once was subject of a call to the police because he hit his mother in the mouth so hard that he knocked out all of her teeth. There were 45 calls for police help at his home, yet he was never charged. One counselor even suggested to his mother that if he engaged in good conduct and was cooperative, that she'd give him a pellet gun as a reward, yeah, for his good behavior. What did this reap? It reaped death and destruction, heartbreak, and tragedy. And I, you know, I really wish that it was as simple as saying, let's take a weapon out of his hand. Let's not let him have a backpack because maybe he won't bring a knife to school or he won't bring a gun to school. You know, it is not that simple. You know, the well-intentioned policies that have been adopted have, in many instances, had the opposite effect than that intended. And I agree that we need to prevent the next Marjory Stoneman massacre. But I seriously doubt that there is one single member in this chamber who has a corner on the market for how to do it, or that there's one bill that's been introduced that is a panacea that is going to stop the next Marjory Stoneman. I pray that there is no child who ever dies again in an attack of this nature. And I pray that the members of this legislative body will continue to do everything that they can to work cooperatively together to develop a comprehensive approach that will develop policies, not political themes and slogans. And I get that maybe some believe that these are wedge issues that are going to benefit us in coming elections. But I think we do a pretty good job in this chamber of trying to work together to find solutions. And there are going to be cats and dogs issues that we're going to fight over. But politicizing the deaths of 17 children who were slaughtered because of a variety of problems, misguided policies, mistakes, errors, omissions, failures, is just wrong.
What purpose, the senior senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasselaw rise.
It's been interesting listening to all this. I was interested in what the Senator from Rockingham had to say, that there were a whole lot of issues involved, but none of them were the gun itself, apparently. Everything else was the problem. You look up, you can go to Wikipedia and you can look up the Western democracies and gun homicide rates. It's no accident that the nearest one to us is one-tenth of what we are. That's Germany. There's this point, and this was as of about three years ago, and it's been pretty much the same over a decade. But the last year I saw the numbers for was a couple of years ago. They were .36 gun homicides per 100,000 people. Great Britain was under .10. The U.S. was 3.6, 10 times the rate. Nobody's saying we need to ban guns. On the other hand, though, the sole qualification for getting a gun shouldn't be that you can fog up a mirror, okay? And when, which is about pretty much what it is here and in a lot of other states. Back, I think it was in 2013, and I try to look at these numbers every year or two, Hawaii became the first state, I think, since they've been keeping statistics, didn't have a single gun homicide, not a one. Now, there's some reasons for that. Number one, you can't load your car trunk up with guns and drive them to Hawaii. Well, you can, but you would need an amphibious vehicle. Wouldn't be very practical. You can only hunt on the Big Island in Hawaii. And on the other islands and probably on that, you can't believe what you got to go through to buy a gun or get a gun. And they've got, I think, close to 2 million people, so they have more people than probably about a dozen states that we have here. When you don't have a lot of guns, guess what? You don't have a lot of gun homicides. I mean, there's one common ingredient, and I'm not saying we need to collect everybody's gun, but there's one common ingredient that exists in all the things we've been talking about today, and it's the gun. And like a lot of you in here, I've been in the service and fired every one of these weapons. There's a lot of these weapons that don't belong in the hands of civilian population. And the, you know, the thing, the adage that a good guy with a gun is going to stop the bad guy. When that Congresswoman from Arizona was shot, apparently there were two people there that apparently told the police they had guns, but they were afraid to use them for fear of hitting innocent people. And the one thing that Senator Obenshein said that was right, there are no easy solutions, no question about it. But the one common ingredient in every single one of these tragedies- But the one common ingredient in every single one of these tragedies, those kids in Florida, they didn't die from a heart attack, okay? And, you know, I've heard people say, well, you know, they'll bring a knife. Try mass murdering 17 people with a knife. Ain't going to happen. And, you know, it's not, I mean, we had, you know, Florida soon after that passed a series of laws, and one of them was they raised the legal age to own or possess a gun to 21. Those bills, that bill didn't pass here. And when I proposed it, somebody told me at one of the associations that we're taking guns away from law-abiding people. Well, we also took alcohol away from law-abiding people because all the people between 18 and 21 weren't getting drunk, getting in cars, and killing people. And yet, we raised the drinking age to 21. In fact, I was a sponsor of that. And 98, 99% of the people didn't get drunk and cause trouble, but they spoiled it for everyone else. The other thing is, I never heard of anybody going into a high school, as I said before, and killing 19 people with a beer bottle. This is not a problem, and no one, by the way, no one over here advocated taking everybody's guns or collecting all the guns. But the problem, as I see it, is easy access. And when all the Western democracies, none of them have a gun homicide rate 1/10 of what ours is, it all tells us something. You can own guns in every single one of those countries, but they just don't hand them out to anybody that says, I want a gun. And that's the difference. And sooner or later, I mean, the American public is going to demand something be done. And are you going to stop, you know, people who have mental problems? No, but you'll certainly make it harder for them to do it, and there's things that we can do that would make it more difficult for them. So in years to come, these bills aren't going to go away. And we can't sit here every year and just keep crying, Second Amendment, Second Amendment. You know, a few years ago, about four or five years ago, The Washington Post did a story after it came out that you could go online and buy a flamethrower. And a fellow called me up and asked me if I was, you know, he knew what my record was, if I was going to put in a bill to ban flamethrowers. And, you know, what I was really tempted, I told him one part of it, that, you know, if you outlaw flamethrowers, only the outlaws will have flamethrowers. And what I was tempted to tell him, but I didn't, was that everybody knows that flamethrowers don't burn people, people burn people. I mean, that's the absurdity of that argument when it's applied to guns, you know? That's the absurdity of that. So we're going, this problem won't go away, and we're going sooner or later have to deal with it. And like I said, it doesn't involve confiscation of everybody's gun. But we've got a problem in this country, and we need to come to grips with it. And, you know, we can't do it by every time somebody proposes something saying, Second Amendment, Second Amendment. The Second Amendment's not absolute, and the U.S. Supreme Court has said that. So, yeah, we can sit here and talk about this, but like I said, it won't go away, and sooner or later, we're going to have to get something done because the people are going to demand it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank the senator. For what purpose, Senator from Jame City County? Senator Normat rise.
Point of personal privilege, Mr. President, and I say, I know better.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, I think that all 40 members of this body absolutely mourn what took place in Florida and some of these other mass shootings that we are talking about. And there certainly is an appropriate time and atmosphere to recognize that. But there are also opportunities to cross that line and start proselyzing it in a public forum as a political wedge issue. And I would say, Mr. President, I am very respectful, this issue is not going away. In fact, it hasn't gone away. Every year that I have been in the General Assembly of Virginia, Second Amendment issues have come before this body in the House of Delegates. They have been debated with passion, they have been debated earnestly, and a majority of the elected legislators in the Commonwealth of Virginia have chosen not to embrace, to not embrace some of the positions that are being advocated here today. So it's not a question that it has gone away, and it is not going away. And we will continue to have that debate in the future. And I say, when, right after I got married this summer, my plans got changed a little bit and ended up in Greensboro, North Carolina. And while I was there, decided to go to the Civil Rights Museum on Woolworths. And can you imagine when we got out of the car and started walking to the front of the museum, that there were TV cameras everywhere? And I thought they must have heard that I was coming. You cannot imagine my surprise when the bus from the Parkland students arrived and that they were taking a tour of the museum that day and having a discussion with some of the former civil rights leaders who had conducted the sit-ins at that Woolworths. And I had the opportunity to talk with a number of these young people, and I was absolutely overwhelmed with their poise, their reasonableness, and their willingness to talk about the experience of that tragedy. And I think that all of us across this nation ought to be respectful of that tragedy, but I don't know that this is the time or place to start developing it as a wedge political
Do any other senators wish to be recognized? For what purpose, the senator from Northern Fairfax? Senator Howell rise.
Well, I just have a question for the senator from Jame City County.
Well, Senator yield for a question.
The young lady knows that I have enormous respect for and consider her friend and a colleague. The answer is no.
Senator will not yield. Do any other senators wish to be recognized? Is there any other business to come before? For what purpose, Senator from Northern Fairfax? Senator Howell rise.
Just rhetorically, I have a point of personal privilege.
Senator has the floor.
Rhetorically, I am asking, which side is making gun safety a wedge issue?
Thank the senator. Is there any other business to come before the Senate? Seeing now, the clerk will report any announcements on the desk.
Today, Thursday, February 14th, the Senate Rules Committee will meet immediately upon adjournment in Senate Room 3 in the Capitol, immediately. The Committee on Agriculture, Conservation, and Natural Resources will meet one half hour after adjournment in Senate Room A in Pocahontas. The Virginia Legislative Black Caucus will not meet. Tonight is the Page's capstone mock session at 5:00 p.m. here in the Senate chamber. Any senator who would like to attend and be a Page would be welcome. Tomorrow, Friday, February 15th, the Committee on Rehabilitation and Social Services will meet at 8:30 a.m., Senate Room A, Pocahontas. The Republican Caucus will meet one half hour before session, Senate Room 2 in the Capitol. The Democratic Caucus will meet one half hour before session, Senate Room 1 in the
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Senator from Bedford, Senator Newman.
Mr. President, I move that the Senate do now adjourn until 10 a.m. tomorrow, and when we do so, we do so in the honor of the victims of the Parkland High School tragedy.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the Senate stand adjourned until 10 a.m. tomorrow, and that when we adjourn, we do so in the honor and memory of the victims of the shooting at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School in Parkland, Florida? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
No opposed, no. The ayes have it. Senate stands adjourned until 10 a.m. tomorrow.